And welcome to the Tingsboro School Committee Meeting on August 23, 2022. I'd like to remind you that these meetings are audio and video recorded. My name is Becky Stanton and I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Hi, Nate Marino, Student Representative.
Jeff Bo.
Dustine Puma.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Michael Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Anthony Tenorel.
Ryan McMahon.
Robert Mullin.
Daniela Thanas.
Bryce with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the approval of meeting minutes. I'll seek a motion to approve the July 26, 2022, School Committee Meeting Minutes and the August 16, 2022, School Committee Working Session Minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 7-0-0. Citizen time, we don't have any citizens here tonight, so we'll move on to correspondence. Mr. Woodlock.
We had an update from the Commissioner's latest update regarding COVID and the extent to which where the expectations will be for masks going forward. And the only remaining expectation going forward is like in a doctor's office, students will be expected to wear masks when they enter the school medical office or nurse's office for the duration of their time in that office. And that is all.
Great, thank you. Moving on to personnel, we have notification of new hires. We have Christian Beck, TMS paraprofessional; Nate Decarteret, TES second shift point seven custodian; Kim Faltz, TMS academic support teacher; Erica Guerri, TES paraprofessional; Ronald Hannan, THS second shift custodian; Evan Hermanson, THS wellness teacher; Shauna Lemay, THS and TMS media production teacher; Hannah McDonald, TMS grade seven social studies teacher; Bobby Morrell, TMS second shift custodian; Vincent Peppa Giorgio, THS academic support teacher; Mackenzie Santry, TES paraprofessional; Angelo Silva, THS second shift custodian; and Christopher Shanahan, THS math teacher. Welcome to all the new hires. And we have notifications of resignation. Stacy Aleka, THS math teacher; Gianna Kasky, THS wellness teacher; Laura Leahy, TMS history teacher; Jacqueline Tenorella, TES bridges teacher; and Heather Wells, TES paraprofessional. Good luck to all of you. Moving on to share the success, Nate, you're up.
Yeah, so last week, the PTO hosted a successful popsicle playdate for new and returning preschool and kindergarten families. So thank you to everyone that joined in on that. Families can drop off school supplies throughout this week between eight and four. The school supply list can be found in the back to school guide, on social media, and on the elementary school website. This Thursday, from three to three thirty, TES will be hosting building tours for families of new students in grades two through five. On Monday, August 29, preschool, kindergarten, and first grade teachers are holding meet and greets for all families. And families are strongly encouraged to review recent updates from Principal Kavanaugh. Please contact the main office with any questions. At the middle school, the Valley Collaborative Summer Program left on Friday, the 19th. They've been using the first floor of the middle school throughout the summer. TMS is getting ready for the start of school with their new student and sixth grade open house on August 25 from nine to 10:30. They are very excited to welcome 153 sixth graders in a week. Teachers have been in school setting their rooms up and making other preparations for the school year throughout the summer. Also, the custodial staff has done a great job getting the building ready for the start of school, so thank you to them for doing that. And with the middle school building project going on, they've worked with the high school to hold gym classes in the shared spaces at THS and outside of the facility. And at THS, fall sports are underway with all teams beginning practices over the last week. Also, freshman and newcomer orientation will take place tomorrow, Wednesday, August 24, from 10:30 to noon. The senior sad kicks and Mrs. Gesterson will be running the event. And all the principals are excited for the start of the year and are looking forward to welcoming back students next week.
Great, thanks Nate. Subcommittee update, we did have a Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee meeting this evening to discuss Dr. Flanagan's goals, and we'll discuss those in more detail a little later on in the meeting. And moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Woodlock, we'll hand it over to you for the MSBA update.
Great. Sorry, I got my paperwork all mixed up.
Sorry.
So the TMS building project update, our PFA was fully executed with the MSBA. Anticipated signature is Friday. Our central office relocation is complete. We've officially moved all central office personnel over here to the high school. August 24, the School Building Committee is meeting to discuss the project's scope and budget, so tomorrow. And ongoing construction timelines are being finalized and permitting timeline and meeting coordination are continually being developed.
Great, thank you. Tony, did you have anything to add as a vice chair?
No, just tomorrow night, again, we have our follow-up, but everything's going on behind the scenes and we're moving along. So it's exciting, for sure.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Woodlock. You can continue on to AB.
Sure. So to recap our administrative retreat, which happened last week, we had, with addition to the district personnel, all administrators from each of our buildings were present. We held it at the elementary school, which was thankfully air-conditioned, which was nice. We actually got cold for a while, which was good. So we were able to get outside and enjoy some of that time on our breaks. But our theme was equity and authentic leadership, and that carried through the entire two days. Some of the highlights, we revisited multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS principles, and introduced concepts of UDL. And so briefly, we talk about MTSS is really about creating systems of support so that all students have equitable access to everything that schools have to offer. We are putting systems in place that allow that to happen. And so there's a lot to unpack there, but generally, that's it. And for UDL, Universal Design for Learning, that's something we're rolling out to staff this year and trying to provide opportunities for staff to gain insight into that. All of the admin team has been trained on an introduction to universal design for learning. Some of them already know quite a bit about it. Others are learning for the first time, so it's a slow roll. But essentially, if we were going to break it down, the components of universally designed learner or practitioner focus on a few specific things. One, I believe that all students are variable, not that we're going to group students into like, well, these students all need help, these students are average learners, these students are accelerated. We want to understand that all students come in with varied needs and abilities, and we want to make sure that we are providing opportunities for all of those students to meet their utmost potential. Secondly, that all students can and have the opportunity to learn and are willing and capable of learning. And third, we want to promote the idea of expert learners, meaning we give students opportunities so that they can learn how they learn best, so that they have options to succeed and sometimes fail and learn from those failures to understand what it is that they need to be a successful learner here, and then as they move on from grade to grade and eventually out of our school, that they have certain basic skills and knowledge of what they require to be successful in a learning environment or a job environment. We also spent quite a bit of time looking at the things that guide us most in our work. And that was, one, the development of a true north statement. So we have developed this true north statement, which was meant to be very short and very memorable. We have a lot of things in education that are filled with jargon that are guiding principles, but none of us can remember exactly what they say, and certainly teachers and students and community members can't either. So what we created was a true north statement. We value all people in our school community and are committed to continuous growth. It's a very broad statement, for sure, but it is going to be our guiding principle. And Joe, if you would move on to the next one. What you see here is what we've been working under, which is our vision, which we intend to keep, but also our theory of action. None of this is bad. This all represents a lot of what we do, what we care about, what we strive to provide in our school district. The problem is, it's hard to make decisions based on things you can't quickly recall. And there's just so much there. So the point was to make sure that we created a statement that we could all reflect on. We make a lot of decisions every day, whether we're building administrators, teachers, or district officials. So we want something that's going to be succinct and guide us through. So we've moved from that slide to, again, this next one, which is our true north statement and our vision statement. Additionally, we met to look at our strategic objectives, our SDI. We want to make sure that we are continually self-reflecting on these, that we're not simply picking up last year's SDI and putting it down and say, let's go for it some more. So we did a lot of times self-reflecting on what our current, meaning, you know, 21, 22 SDI was, and if we needed to, you know, make big changes or make small changes to those priorities. And as we went through, we did make some small changes in some and some larger changes in the other, but by and large, it is very reflective of what we've had before with some specific changes. So our first, meeting the needs of all students, no change. Our second, which was rigorous and consistent programming, we've tried to make it a little bit more broad to say, providing comprehensive and inclusive learning environments. When we talk about equity and trying to provide for our students and make sure that all students have options, MTSS, UDL, and those types of things, those things are big-ticket items. And those don't happen without structures in place to allow teachers and administrators to go in that direction. So we want to make sure that we're focused on the whole district in this realm. And third, prioritizing professional growth and development was formerly just professional practice. And so we also want to focus on professional practice, but we wanted to extend it to make sure that, in line with the second, that we're providing our teachers with what they need to get where we want our students to go. So Joe, if you could go to the next one. Obviously, there's a lot of information to unpack here, but we've taken those strategic objectives and then rewritten our strategic priorities to meet or to match those objectives. So 1.1, which is relative to meeting all students, ensure all students will have multi-tiered educational experiences focused on individual social, emotional, and academic growth. Secondly, provide targeted interventions and extensions, as well as specific programming that meet the individual needs of all learners. Our priorities in two, which was providing comprehensive and inclusive learning environments, include 2.1, improve academic achievement outcomes by continuing work centered on curriculum alignment and development, and maintain a focus on collaborative feedback and evaluation. Secondly, effectively use data and research to ensure that educational and operational decisions are grounded in best practice. Third, prioritizing professional growth and development. Our priorities under that, 3.1, develop and implement innovative and student-centered instructional and assessment practices consistently throughout the district. And 3.2, build capacity in the staff's knowledge of and ability to effectively use various forms of data and feedback to inform curriculum, instruction, and assessment design and practices. Our next steps towards the implementation of this is our administrators will be drafting goals for the school year that are tied to our SDI. They were all very busy doing that today. Our true north statement and updated SDI will be shared with staff on Monday, August 29. Our teachers will then draft goals over the coming weeks that are tied to the SDI. And staff meetings and professional development opportunities throughout the year will be tied to the SDI as well. So we really want to make sure that there's a clear through line from our district initiatives all the way through our classroom teachers and their goals. Lastly, our upcoming meetings, obviously, we're meeting this evening. As Tony mentioned, we have a school building committee tomorrow night. And then our September 6 and September 20 and October 4, school committee meetings will have presentations from our schools as well, THS, TMS, and TES, last but certainly not least.
Mr. Woodlock, those presentations, do we intend to have those in person this year?
I sure hope so.
Okay, good. We're looking forward to those. Those are the best part of the year. Are there any points of discussion? All right.
Will teachers be provided with different types of lesson plans to bring about this student-centered learning?
Teachers are going to be, we're really slow-rolling this, so we're not asking anything specific of teachers. I've hosted two workshops for teachers that were voluntary over the course of the summer, which was an introduction to universal design for learning with some aspects of multi-tiered systems of support built in there. Sarah Lewensik and I, our Director of Student Services, have also run workshops, three different workshops for three different admin groups in our buildings, so that they were at least in the same place that we all were as far as introduction to these very large, as I'm sure you can imagine, these very large topics, right? So we definitely don't want to overwhelm anyone, that's for sure. We have a lot of professional development already pre-planned for this year, meaning we have some outside groups coming in that are providing professional development that will encompass, you know, quite a bit of our elementary school teachers, but also in the middle school, some math teachers in the middle and the high school. So one thing we definitely didn't want to do was guide our professional development time around these specifically, because we don't want some teachers getting a lot of information while other teachers are in other professional development opportunities, which are useful and good, but not having the same information. So we worked to develop a plan with our building administrators in that we will use our staff meeting time monthly to incrementally bring in smaller aspects of everything that we talked about in our meeting and our workshop this year, so that all staff members are getting the same and that we're slowly rolling it out. And we definitely want to encourage teachers that are ready and willing to go forward with these things, to try out new things, but we're not demanding that of anyone.
Yeah, just giving you an idea.
Yeah, we want to make sure that we do it in a way that is fair to our staff and make sure that, you know, they're not feeling overwhelmed. We're coming off of a couple of years where a lot of teachers felt overwhelmed. The last thing we want to do is push an initiative that we value and have people, you know, maybe push it back to us because they're not quite ready. So we're going to take, you know, anytime you initiate any large change, you know, we're looking at three to five years, you know, of consistent planning, fidelity with professional development implementation, and making sure that people are feeling comfortable.
No, that sounds very good.
Yes, so we want to make sure we do that. In addition to those other summer activities, we also had over 30 teachers sign up to get a book, which is like an introduction to universal design for learning. And with that book, they were able to access a graduate-level course for only $100 and get three credits.
Oh, awesome.
So that was a great opportunity that 30 of our teachers took. So we had upwards of like 45, 50 teachers who voluntarily spent their summer doing some of this. So I think it's a great start, and we definitely want to encourage our teachers, but, you know, we're taking the long approach here because we want to do it right.
Okay. I've heard of something called Challenge Day, and I've actually participated in it. Have you ever heard of Challenge Day?
I have not.
It's an organization that comes and does everything that you just talked about, but with the kids directly. It's a great, almost like in-house, you know, retreat for the kids to learn about their fellow classmates and what they're going in. It challenges them to do everything that you just mentioned. I'll just send you an email and you can look it over.
Great, love to see that. Thank you.
It's called Challenge Day, if anybody else wants to look it up. It's pretty good. Great, thanks, Dustine. Thank you for that update, Mr. Woodlock. Moving on to 9A, I think we mentioned earlier briefly that we had met as a subcommittee to discuss the superintendent goals for 2223, and so we'll discuss those in a little more detail here. Mr. Woodlock, would you like to present those to the committee?
Sure, happy to. So these are Dr. Flanagan's goals for this year, which obviously have quite an impact on myself and our building administrators as well. So I'm going to read through them, and there are several key actions for each one, so please bear with me. So goal number one is a student learning goal. By June 2023, the Tingsboro Public Schools will have updated and implemented revised goals and actions in our strategy for district improvement. Key actions include, one, lead the administrative team in updating the current SDI to reflect the needs of students and staff as we return to school after a non-traditional school year. Two, facilitate an administrative retreat that focuses on authentic leadership, implementation of multi-tiered systems of support, and introduction of universal design for learning principles. Three, revisit school-based key actions in the SDI and ensure that they are updated and reflect our vision to refocus on teaching and learning. Four, regularly communicate with the school committee about the SDI in ways that the district is working towards achieving the identified outputs and outcomes. Five, meet regularly with administrators and content leaders to ensure resources are in place to achieve goals identified in our SDI. Six, provide opportunities for the school committee and community to learn of best practices that are in place throughout the district that center on student learning and growth. And lastly, present highlights and updates regularly to the Tingsboro School Committee that show progress towards goals and next steps forward with our strategy for district improvement. Goal number two, by June 2023, the Tingsboro Middle School Building Project will be underway and all administrative tasks will have been completed and on schedule. Additionally, information regarding the project will be shared regularly with the school committee and the greater community. Key actions under this goal include, one, serve as an integral part of the school building committee and ensure all deadlines are met with a quality product that reflects the Tingsboro Public Schools. Two, facilitate all meetings walkthroughs and provide all documentation as needed by the MSBA, Left Field LLC, J CJ, and/or Fontaine Brothers Construction. Three, regularly attend and/or facilitate school building committee meetings and community meetings as determined by the SBC to inform the community of progress and to make necessary and timely decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Woodlock. The subcommittee met earlier this evening to discuss the goals. We voted in favor of these goals to present them to the full committee tonight in 3-0-0. And one of the points of discussion was really to revisit these goals a little bit more regularly than we may have in the past. And I think, you know, coming out of some interesting years that may have had other focuses, I think it's really important that, you know, it's not just the central office and the school offices that are focusing on these goals. I think it's important that we, as a school committee as well, are also focusing on these goals. So, you know, not looking for a formal motion as to getting together on these a little more often, but I do think as a committee, we need to visit these a little more often.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
I would actually like to see us meet, even if it was once a month, an executive session to discuss his goals, where we are, where we stand. And I think it will help the whole committee when it comes time for his formal evaluation at the end of the year, instead of just trying to throw everything out at the last minute of what he's done, what he's accomplished, where he may need improvement, to have those meetings monthly and understand the whole process as we go along. So I don't know if anybody else is in favor of that, but if we scheduled an executive session at the second meeting of each month or...
I think that's a great idea.
...on that lines.
Yeah, if something's not going the way we want, we owe him to provide timely feedback. We shouldn't wait till the end of the year and say, hey, you know, you weren't doing well.
Right.
You know, I have that expectation in my life of my employees, my boss gives me that feedback. We should do the same for Dr. Flanagan.
I agree.
I think it's also important that, because we only meet twice a month, and I'm on the school building committee, I'm the co-chair of the school building committee, I know the time that Dr. Flanagan puts in on this project, and it is huge. It could almost be a full-time job all by itself, and Mr. Messina and anyone who's been involved in one of these projects can tell you that. For those of us that don't see that on a regular basis, you don't necessarily understand how much time and energy and effort goes into organizing all of this and putting it together for us. So I think it would be important that we meet monthly, even if it's only for five minutes.
Yeah, I agree. I think we owe that to Dr. Flanagan, his teams, and we owe it to the students.
Yes.
Also, you guys have said that evaluations are given for professional development days and student, I mean, staff fills those out. Is there a way that we could read those? Because that would go into number one, leading the administrative team and updating current SDIs.
Well, and I think that can be a point of discussion as we're going through evaluating these, that, you know, we can have that feedback to Dr. Flanagan for meeting more regularly about it.
So that we can, you know, see what the teachers are saying in response to the professional development that they're experiencing.
Great, yeah. So I will seek a motion to approve the goals as presented for school year 2223.
So moved.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 7-0-0. Great. Moving on to the fiscal '22 executive session minutes for council review and approval to release. I believe these were reviewed by our council. They are in the drive in a folder for us to review. Hopefully, you've all reviewed. I will seek a motion to request council's review and approval of the fiscal '22 executive session minutes for release.
So moved.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Danielle abstained, so that carries 6-0-1. Moving on to finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, the committee was presented nine bill warrants. I do have them back approved. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. Also in your drive for signing of bills were warrants that were brought to the work session last week. And again, those were 10 warrants with the warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts in your drive. For signing of payroll, two payrolls since the last time we reviewed them, the payroll of August 1 and August 15, again, warrant number and amounts are in your drive. For other, as most of you know, and just as a point of information, we sort of left the food service pricing information up in the air in July. The state finally did come through and guaranteed that they would pick up the ball that the feds pretty much dropped and would cover reimbursable lunches for the full school year for this year. We are making a small price increase in purchases of milk. Milk by themselves are not covered in the program, only reimbursable meals, which is a meal with milk. And we hadn't raised our milk prices since 2013. So in looking at our margins on the milk, we did increase that from 50 cents to 60 cents. But again, if anybody buys a full meal, the milk is free. So even if you don't want a meal, buy the meal, get the milk for free, and save yourself 60 cents. That's it for me.
Ms. Messina, I do have one question. Sorry, I'm throwing you a curveball here.
Sure.
Do you have any update on the playground?
Last I heard, and I heard anything differently, they're still shooting for an early October install. All of the equipment has been ordered. Anybody that's at the elementary school can see that the younger playground structure is now gone. They are prepping the site. They hope to get the equipment in, and then they can pour the rubber surface in. But without the equipment, they can't work on pouring the surface in.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
So still shooting on, you know, everything I'm hearing was still talking early October. So I guess cross that, we keep on that timeline.
Yeah, all right. School committee discussion, Nate?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Jeff?
Just welcome back to our teachers and students, and hope everyone has a good start to the new year.
Dustine?
I want to wish luck to the students and the staff and the parents. This is one of the most stressful times of the year, trying to get everyone back to school, so I hope everyone has a good year.
Joe?
Again, be very interesting to see the high school occupied with students now that our offices share the same space. So we'll be a little more integrated into the operation here and look forward to an exciting time.
Very good. Danielle?
Just wish everybody good luck with the start of the year. I get jealous of my kids this time every year. I love back to school and just wish everybody good luck.
Rob?
Like to echo the same sentiments, thank welcoming everybody back. But I would also like to add, you know, I've been fortunate enough to see all three buildings within the last couple of weeks. I would love to thank the custodial staff and the maintenance staff for all of their hard work this summer. The buildings look fantastic. The buildings look fantastic. They really, they really work hard, especially in the buildings without air conditioning, having to do that all summer. That's, that's extremely hard work. So thank you very much to them and wish everyone the best of luck this season, this year.
Right.
Welcome back, everybody. I refuse to believe summer's over, so I think everybody's pranking me. I don't believe anybody's coming back, but I guess it's happening.
I echo that, and I would just add that come Tuesday morning, there will be children standing on the sides of streets. So drive careful, leave early so you don't get stuck behind a school bus like I do every day. And welcome back.
Mr. Woodlock?
Yeah, I'd like to kind of echo what Mr. Mullen said. The schools look great. I'm real, we're really excited to have children back in them. Like to thank the, Mr. Semantelli and his crew for getting us all moved in upstairs in kind of short order. It actually feels like our office is up there now. And just to let everyone know, you know, how excited we are on behalf of all the building admin and central office to, to welcome students back this year. So best of luck, everyone.
Very good. Well, I don't think there's anything that hasn't been said about welcoming students back. So with that, we do not have a need for executive session tonight, and I will seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries seven zero zero. We're adjourned, thank you.